It feels really high, all of this.
Um, he screams to talk.
Oh, you don't have to, but thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Victorville Planning Commission for August 8th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Chair Kurt.
Here.
Vice Chair Porter. Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Du.
President.
Next, if you'll please rise, we'll go ahead with the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Marsh.
Lord, we come to you in thankfulness for the opportunities and the freedoms that this country offers. We ask for your guidance and your blessing over this meeting so that the decisions that are made are in the best interest of this city.
We have a set of minutes that we need to deal with from the July 11th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Du with a second by Commissioner Huber to approve the minutes of the July 11th, 2018 Regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And tonight, we have a couple of special guests with us. There'll be a presentation, introduction of our police captain, Rick Bessinger, and our fire chief, Greg Benson. Introduction?
Good evening, commissioners. Yeah, it's my pleasure to be able to bring both of our new chiefs to you so that you can put a face to a name and so that they could also be aware of who our five planning commissioners are. The first one I'd like to bring up is Victorville's Police Chief, Captain Rick Bessinger.
Hello. Good evening. It's very nice to meet some of you, some I've met before. I am, I'm very honored to be selected as the captain for the Victorville City Station. I've worked here previously as a sergeant and have been a longtime High Desert resident, so it's nice working in the community that I live in to have some, hopefully, effect and change. We have a bunch of good men and women working at the department, working their hardest to do the best for the city. If there's anything that we can do, always feel free to reach out to me directly or through the city. So with that, I'm just happy to be here. If anyone has any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer. But it's just an honor to be here back in the city.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'd like to make the commission aware that I met with the captain along with others and was impressed with his background. It's quite extensive and quite interesting. That makes him actually the best qualified person for the position, and I'm glad, I'm most pleased that you're serving the city of Victorville. So I'm honored to have you with us. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to ask the new fire chief, Greg Benson. He will head up our Victorville Fire as we go live in April of next year and present him to the commission.
Good evening, commission.
Good evening.
Very honored to be before you and working in the role of fire chief for the city. This is no easy task, but we've got a great staff that's working alongside and we're going to develop a very high-quality fire department. Certainly, when this opportunity came up, that Sophie mentioned the Planning Commission was meeting and an opportunity to meet the Planning Commission. Some of our goals is, one, is to have a high level of engagement in the community, and that is at all levels. Understanding some of the tasks and challenges that you may face or help govern with and just being aware of some of those things. I know that Captain Bessinger was up here just a minute ago, but one of the examples of strong partnership was the recent fireworks interdiction that the city and the sheriff and some of the new fire staff worked on in order to make the city safer. And that's just the beginning of some of the things that I think we can do. So we have a great opportunity here and certainly look forward to interacting with members of the commission here, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if there were any questions, I'd be happy to...
A comment. I was a volunteer for 30 years.
Whoa. Really? What years did you serve?
Had a good program at that time.
That's the type of community that I'm learning that this is, that there are people out there that I've met that have, you know, they've worked as a volunteer. And when did you do that? Well, I did that in the early 40s to the 60s or whatever that might be. Wow. Changed a little bit since then, huh?
Did I, did I read somewhere that you worked on developing a newer fire department? Was it in northern Illinois?
Yes, sir.
What town was that?
It was in a fire district. It covered a couple of different towns.
Just how happens that Commissioner Huber and myself, by coincidence, are from small towns just north of the, in southern Wisconsin, Beloit, Jamesville.
I know where that's at.
So kind of all the same stomping grounds here now again.
Yeah, drive through that all, used to drive through that all the time going up to Wisconsin.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we can start with agenda item number one, staff report, please.
Chairman, commissioners, agenda item number one, Plan 1832. It's a tentative parcel map with an environmental exemption to allow for the creation of two new parcels from an existing half-acre parcel on property-zoned R1 single-family residential. And it's located at the northwest corner of Avalon Road and Melino Drive. And the purpose of the parcel map is to allow for two single-family homes, and the new lot sizes are compatible with other lots in the built-out neighborhood. The act recommends approval as conditioned and is available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing then, then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on agenda item number one. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to us on item number one? Seeing no one, I will bring it back to the commission for a decision.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter with a second by Commissioner Du to approve case PLAN 18-00032 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number two, please.
Yes, Chairman, commissioners, agenda item number two is a site plan and conditional, I'm sorry, it's Plan 1831, and it's a site plan and conditional use permit to allow for a new 70-foot-tall monopole wireless communication facility and accessory equipment with an environmental exemption. It's located at the southeast corner of Turner Road and Phantom East at 14499 Turner Road. And the applicant has demonstrated the need for coverage for this area, and as well as a tower was approved to the west of this site, maybe about a mile west within SCLA, and it was never installed and it expired, so there's definitely a need for coverage in the area. Additionally, the 70-foot tower is not stealth due to the industrial zoning, the vacancy of the land, and power poles virtually surround the site almost completely. The act recommends approval as conditioned and is available for questions.
Any questions of staff? I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on item number two. I have one card here from the applicant, Mr. Novak.
Hello, Chairman, hello, commissioners. My name's Bryce Novak. I am my company's J5 Infrastructure Partners. We're a vendor for Verizon. I just want to state for the record that I've read the staff report and COAs, and I agree with them, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Novak.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to us on agenda item number two? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for a determination.
I'll find the project category exempt for sequel section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures and adopt resolution number P. Or should I case number PLAN 1831 subject to the task condition of approval and adopt resolution number P18043 approving the site plan. Case number PLAN 1831 subject to the task condition.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second with Commissioner Marsh to approve case PLAN 18-00031 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number three is a request for a continuance. I will open up the public hearing in case anybody is here to speak to us on item number three. Seeing no one, then I will continue this item to the Planning Commission meeting of September 12th, 2018. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurt with a second by Commissioner Du to keep the public hearing open and continue case PLAN 18-00022 to the September 12th. to the September 12, 2018, regular planning commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then once again on item number four, this is a request for a continuance. And I'll open the public hearing to see if there's anyone to speak to us on item number four. Seeing no one, I will make the motion to continue this item to the planning commission meeting of September 12, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurt with a second by Commissioner Dew to keep the public hearing open and continue case PLN 17-00005 to the September 12, 2018, regular planning commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kurt. Fellow Commissioners, item number five is case PLAN 16-00004. It is an extension of time and modification of tentative track map 14863, a 561-lot, single-family residential subdivision that was previously approved and environmentally assessed on the property located within a planned unit development. This is located north of Puesta del Sol, east of Village Drive, south of Desert Poppy Lane, and west of Green Hill Drive. The original map was approved back in 2003, and it was slated for over a thousand lots, spanning over 189 acres. The applicant's now requesting to reduce the size to 109 acres and only 561 single-family lots. As noted, the project's within a planned unit development. This allows for single-family homes on lots 4,000 square feet or larger. In 2006, a rough grading occurred on the site. However, the map never recorded. So the applicant's proceeding now with getting a time extension so they can record the map before it expires. They've made revisions to the area in question that's been regraded, which includes expanded LMAD landscaping along Blue Canyon Drive. And they've also included a three-acre park site. And also call attention to the add-on that was passed out today. Staff revised five of the conditions, and those are for your review. We've met with the applicant, and they're also agreeable to the revised conditions. They addressed the establishment of the maintenance assessment and also the maintenance of the basin and drainage improvements. And with that, staff finds that the property conforms with the planned unit development, also makes effort to comply with current PUD standards. And therefore, staff recommends approval as conditioned with the revised resolution. Available if you have any questions.
Thanks. Any questions of staff on this one?
I read through there that the, just out of curiosity, because we did a lot of work, you know. The assessment district is there to fund the amenities by the property owners within this tract. Is that right?
That is correct.
And it's phased just because, I think I read it to understand that you wouldn't have enough people paying you, right, to be able to have all the amenities right away?
That's correct. Based on discussions with the applicant, we saw that phase three would be the best time to put the park site in. They will have to, as part of phase one, create the basin portion and maintain that privately until the assessment district's fully established and the park improvements are in place.
Phase one and actually...
No, as it's currently conditioned, no. But what's conditioned for is that they pay their fair share. So when phase one builds out and the property owners change hands, the city will still have a portion of that, of the fair share for the construction cost of that park. The city would hold on to that until the park site's built in phase three. So there's safeguards in place that will, they'll be paying their proportional share of the park upfront. And then we'll also have an established maintenance assessment before any of the tracks or phases develop.
So it could, theoretically, it could, let's say, phase three never develops, it just stops, but you do have a phase one and phase two, and they're actually built.
That is correct.
Built out, no amenities.
Correct, yes. Phase one and phase two total, I think it's 101 lots. 101 lots built out before phase three comes along.
That's relatively small.
In comparison to the overall 561 lots, yes.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'll open the public hearing on agenda number five. Is there anyone? Come forward.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Dean Paradise. I'm the civil engineer on this project. Appreciate you taking the time to look at this. We've worked very hard with staff, and I really want to commend staff for working with us and coming up with creative conditions and solutions to our tentative map. So we approve the conditions as we have agreed to. And the developer representatives are also here to answer any questions you have. They drove two hours to be here, so they might appreciate a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us, or anyone that drove two hours that would like to speak to us? Being no one, I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the commission for a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak to one of the people representing this group.
Yes, I'll make sure that the public hearing is now open, and go ahead.
Someone come to the podium?
Are you looking for the developer or the engineer?
Developer or the engineer, doesn't matter.
You can all come up, it's fine. Commissioner Dew has a question.
Are you familiar with the Victor Elementary School District?
Pardon me?
Are you familiar with the Victor Elementary School District?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And there is a school within your project, which is Puesta del Sol?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming that students are going to attend that school, and then there's another school not far away from where your project is being developed.
Yeah, that's up to the school district. They'll make that determination, and they make it on a yearly basis, is my understanding.
I used to sit on that board.
Oh, okay.
Pretty familiar with the school district and where you're building the school. I just want to compliment you because there's a need for housing in that particular area because Puesta del Sol is growing. And then the other school, that's a neighboring school, is also growing. So I just want to know, did you have knowledge of their growth?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Developer has also offered to the school some property they have between the channel and the school. So they're actually in negotiations with them and have offered the property. I don't know where you're at with that, but maybe you want to give us an update if they decided to take it or not.
Well, I think the school district needs to, are still working some of their, you know, due diligence, doing their due diligence on that portion. So we're not quite sure where they are with that.
Well, thank you. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So then I will close the public hearing and bring it back for a determination.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to find the project previously assessed under tentative track TT-03-005, adopt resolution number P-18-009, approving the modification and time extension to the subject tentative track map. Case number PLN 16-00004, subject to the attached conditions of approval, including the adoption of the attached revised resolution number P-18-009.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh with a second by Commissioner Dew to approve case PLN 16-00004 as conditioned with the revised resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That was approved. Thank you for attending tonight. Moving on to new business, item number six. It's a determination for an outdoor, possible outdoor storage in the CM district staff, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Fellow Commissioners, item number six, we are requesting a determination of use. We were approached by a business applicant, Accelerated Modular Concepts, and they're requesting consideration of an outdoor modular storage yard for the purposes of refurbishing modular buildings within an existing building located at 12137 Industrial Boulevard. This is the old CED building. It's located just kind of in a depressed area along the Bear Valley Road and the railroad tracks. The proposed use would be considered light industrial. That's not really the issue. The issue is of the outdoor storage within our CM district. The CM district requires that open storage be screened from view by a wall, building, or other means. The request was somewhat unique because most of our open storage screening is kind of raw material, unprocessed. It's not intact buildings that are stored. So the request for you today is whether the planning commission even considers modular buildings as storage. If the planning commission does not consider the placement of modular buildings on a site as storage, then the screening requirement would not apply. And that's what we're presenting to the commission today. I see that the applicants here, if you have questions about their operations, and we're also available if you have any questions as well.
Thank you. At this point, are there any questions from the commissioners regarding this request? Okay, well, we've been given all the pictures that were submitted, full write-up from staff. Is the applicant or representatives, do you have any comments or any statements at this time?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Don Brownlee and Associates, we represent the owner of the property. I'd like to bring to the commission's attention, this has been a very difficult site to find a user for. We have a lot of buildings in the city of Victorville that kind of apply the same way as far as they don't quite fit the perfect box. But we're bringing an opportunity to the city at this time to bring a company that's going to generate 30-plus jobs annually and be involved in the refurbishment and renovation of modular buildings that are used all over the country. These modulators are used for Homeland Security, Border Patrol, schools, student housing, et cetera. The applicant has decided that this is a great location for their business. They like the environment up here. They can work basically 24/7, 365 days of the week. In addition to that, they have a good workforce, and a lot of their workforce right now that's commuting to Hemet lives up here in the high desert. So they'd very much like to relocate their business to our region. I hope he'll consider this determination tonight. Applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
That's correct. Yeah, and anything that you put down, anything that you put down there, Commissioner, will definitely be seen. I don't know how you're going to do it unless we put 4.2 acres of a carport up there.
Thank you.
Okay.
But yeah, it seems like it is a fencing determination. Personally, I feel, I don't know how somebody would construct any kind of fence from any of the angles to the property to... You and they, you know, from the photos and some of the other drawings, they just look like modular buildings. I'm sure there'll be a number of them, if they're successful, sitting out in a grid kind of pattern behind the building. And I don't see how that could be screened. And I don't really, personally, I don't feel this is like a manufacturing outdoor storage of raw materials or typical product. Are there any other comments on that? Do we have a consensus?
No problem.
We need a motion?
I gather that at least the majority has a consensus. Through the business license process, we can, business license on how it operates. In this case, we could dictate certain storage, like intact buildings.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so I think the planning commission does have a consensus and agrees with the staff recommendation to determine the storage of modular buildings is not considered open storage and therefore should not require screening of those modular buildings.
I had just one question kind of off, on the same subject, though. With the new, the widening and construction of the Bear Valley Road Bridge, which is pretty much right there, do you think in that design, we'll eventually see when that's completed? Will it be more like the Yucca Loma Bridge where it does have a walkway? And there is kind of some fencing up on the bridge and some railings and a little bit of view blocking on desirable areas over that bridge?
There will be some similarities, but in a nutshell, not exactly, because that bridge is very short. It's less than 200 feet long. And so we are going to do some limited aesthetic features that will be somewhat consistent. We've worked, Scott and I have worked with the consultant on that with a few decorative lights, but you're not going to see all the features. It won't have a dedicated bike path, pedestrian path, yet, like the Yucca Loma Bridge. Someday, we could fit that in, but with this project, that path is not going in yet.
So the edge of the bridge might have a little bit of a fencing, but nothing substantial?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so I guess then it would come back to the zoning administrator? Or does that come to the planning commission once the...
The site, the site could be considered exempt from sequel, and we could handle it at staff level. We just have to work with the applicant to determine that there's no suitable habitat for endangered species on site. If that's the case, then we can handle it at staff level and give them the permits to move forward at that point.
Okay, that's the direction. Thank you. Item number seven is an activity log. Is there any comments from staff on the information that we received?
Yeah, this was presented to the city council, and Sophie had the... Yeah, this was presented to the city council, and Sophie had the good idea to bring it before you as well. We're also working on planning reports as well, that we'll be giving to you periodically, just to keep you updated, to let you know what's coming through the door.
Yeah, the goal is, it's been some years since we received, even at the, and prepared for the city council, just a, a measurement, and this will probably be a quarterly report of what activity we have going on. You see the front end of a project, but don't necessarily know when applicants are pulling permits, et cetera. So you can kind of track the actual single-family activity and other activity of projects you've approved over the years. And then, I think what will be more helpful for you is the regular reporting that Scott is working on, along with our IT department, that really shows kind of on a map, the projects you've approved and the status of them. And then, you see projects individually at each meeting, but it just kind of shows a comprehension, a comprehensive overview of what's going on in the city. So those will be coming to you as well, more regular reporting.
Well, I, I really appreciate it. I think these kind of things really help us kind of stay in the know a little bit, a little bit more so, especially since I'm a charts-and-graf kind of guy. I tend to remember things more so. You know, I think, I thank staff for putting this together for us, specifically the building division, you know, on, on this one. Any, any comments on the building reports?
Very positive.
Thank you. The next item, number, number eight, is a proposed tour, tour of the city that was brought up by Commissioner Do, and so we've been given a tentative date and time. If the consensus of the planning commission is in agreement, then, then we have a tour. Is there any other information we have yet?
No, more information will follow, and if, if you have any specific things that you'd want to see during the tour, or get more insight on, please let us know. We kind of have an understanding that, that the tour is focused on kind of where our, our boundaries are, where development is occurring, and where we foresee development to occur. And so, we can kind of base the tour off of that and kind of take you along for the ride, and give, kind of maybe give you some background on, on different issues that the city's dealing with, with the build-out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of that. I think that, I think that's healthy, and especially heading out towards west side of Victorville, where most likely a lot of the new home growth is going to happen in vacant land out there. And, you know, just, just being aware of what areas would, might be commercial zoning, what, you know, what things might change as it builds out, you know, because we all look at the zoning maps, but sometimes driving the area and then looking at the maps, it gets it close, you know, closer to home. But I'm okay, I'm okay with the twenty-ninth. Is everyone here okay with? Do you have an estimate of how long it might be?
Yeah, so it, it should wrap up around noon, and I think the thought that maybe we would come back to City Hall and have lunch provided, and kind of, or your feedback. Obviously, we have to publicly notice it as a mobile workshop, and there would be an agenda provided beforehand. And we plan to do it through a, a bus tour, similar to our prior tours, where we would take the, the city bus, I'm sorry, the city, the city van around. And there's only limited seating, but we can, we can make other arrangements, or rendezvous at each stop that we go to, if there's more than what can fit in the van.
Right, sounds good. Let's, let's move forward to schedule that.
Chairman, does it require a, a motion?
Yeah, I believe since it's the next, it's the next, yeah, we can adjourn at the end of this meeting, we can adjourn.
Because it falls before our next meeting? Yep, thank you, Commissioner Do. Yeah, that would be a...
I think Tara?
We'll have to notice it as a special meeting anyway, probably, I, I would imagine, for, for Brown Act purposes. So
So I guess we don't have to...
We may sort of have to indicate our, our stops, so that, you know, I don't know how big the city, how big your van is, but, you know, logistically, technically, if it's a public tour, obviously, it'd be a first-come, first-served, anybody wanted to fit on that van. And then, if the stops sort of need to be planned in advance, so that if, if a member of the public did wish to attend, they, they would know where the rendezvous areas were. They could even, on their own, so it's...
So Tara, would you recommend an adjournment, or just us posting for a special meeting, along with probably the route will be determined by then?
I'd, I'd recommend posting for, for a special meeting.
Okay.
Of course, they do it more than twenty-four hours in advance, because once we get the schedule worked out, so we'd probably do it as far in advance as, as possible, once we have the schedule worked, just for the benefit of the public. My recommendation.
Will do.
In compliance with the Brown Act, we need to make time necessary for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within our subject-matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone to speak to us on any items of our jurisdiction? Planning Commissioner, presentations. Commissioner Marsh?
I don't have anything.
We can look into that, yeah. They're only allowed on a temporary basis up to three months. Yeah, three months. So they would, they'd have to get a temporary use permit for that.
Do you have something?
Yes.
I apologize. On Bear Valley Road, it's, it's Bear Valley and Pacoima, that, right across on that, that dirt field, the desert, there's like, like a utility section, a fenced utility section, but there's about, I passed there, there's about sixty grocery baskets all stacked up along that utility section. I know those are baskets that have been collected throughout the desert and stuff, but they've been sitting there. And they end up being pushed, you know, over into the business side of, of Pacoima.
The, the city has a collection service, so we can, we can look into that and address any of the enforcement issues with, with the actual business owners of those cars.
I have nothing either. Is there any comments from staff?
Do you plan to bring, I know Old Town hasn't been brought up in a while, but we do plan to agendize that for the October hearing. And we'll also be giving some more information. It looks like our October hearing's going to conflict with the San Diego Planning Conference. So, so at the September hearing, we'll have some more, some more options for you or direction on maybe postponing that meeting a week to the seventeenth instead of the tenth in October. But that's all I had.
Okay, well, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Yep.